Supervisors meeting. Like I said, welcome everybody for today. Great to have you here. We're going to start with the roll call, please. I'll ask the clerk to do the roll call.
Supervisor Boone?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Present.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Here.
Supervisor Baines?
Present.
Supervisor Stevens?
Here.
Great, please, everybody, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation today is going to be done by my friend Pastor Doug Smith from Hope Point, Nazarene Church. Doug?
Let's pray. Living God, we are grateful today to be in this wonderful county. It's a great state, so beautiful today, and we just pray right now for your guidance, your direction. We look to you and your ways, for they are perfect. We pray they'll just heal this land. It starts with our hearts and our minds, so give us guidance and give us directions today. And thank you for our leaders and for their wisdom and their patience and their dedication. We pray all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Doug. If I could have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Baines, please.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, you may be seated. And I'll ask the board to join me up front for some presentations that we have.
Will Liz Bonn, Douglas Hill, and Teresa Gaither please join the board up front for presentation of certificates of recognition to the adult probation intervention counselors?
Mike is working, okay. Well, the Sutter County Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize Liz Bonn, Douglas Hill, and Teresa Gaither, adult probation intervention counselors for their outstanding dedication, compassion, commitment to our clients and community. And this, we're going to hear from Nicole now, who's the chief probation officer. She's going to say a few words.
Thank you. The Sutter County Probation Department and the Sutter County Jail are fortunate to have a team of dedicated intervention counselors who play a key role in supporting justice-involved individuals. Doug, Liz, and Teresa provide intensive outpatient services for individuals struggling with substance use at the Sutter County Probation Department. In addition to substance use treatment, they also offer programs focused on anger management, coping skills, and overall behavioral health, behavioral improvement. Beyond their work at probation, Doug, Liz, and Teresa extend their services to the Sutter County Jail, where they facilitate groups for in custody persons. This collaborative approach not only supports people during their time in custody, but also helps ease their transition back into the community. In custody persons have the opportunity to earn milestones while in custody to reduce the length of their stay. They can do this in a few ways, including through completing workforce readiness, earning credits towards their diploma, working kitchen detail, and participating in various groups and programs offered by the intervention counselors. During fiscal year 2324, the intervention counselors issued an astounding 332 milestones to 155 separate individuals. That's 155 lives better positioned for success when they re-enter the community. We are extremely thankful to have such a dedicated team of intervention counselors, whose passion and commitment to the work they do shows through the successes of their clients and exemplifies what it means to be a public servant. Thank you.
Thank you. Give them a round of applause. Take a photo together.
Will Darren Courtney and volunteers of the American Red Cross please join the board up front for presentation of a proclamation recognizing March 2025 as American Red Cross Month?
During American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Sutter County and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. This generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanitarian legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. Today, kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they step up through the Red Cross in the California Gold Country region to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make a life-saving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crisis. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 as Red Cross Month in Sutter County, and we encourage all citizens of Sutter County to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. Comments? Okay, sure. Did you have some comments?
Well, we want to thank you, the Board of Supervisors, once again for providing this proclamation to us. It's an honor. It's an honor to serve our community, our friends, our neighbors, our state, our region, division, and nation. We offer a lot of ongoing trainings and such that are still available for those that want to sign up. We have preparedness courses for adults and children. We have certification CPR, first aid, and AED training, and also that includes now Spanish-speaking trainings. Also, we have, we're always accepting new volunteers, of course. I got to throw that plug in. This Saturday, we'll be working with the Department, the Office of Emergency Services doing the go-bag party. We also accept nonprofits to utilize our newly remodeled facility here in Yuba City at 2125 East Onstott Road. Feel free to come by and check it out during our office hours, and you're always welcome to come and visit us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And if you could just quick shout out as well to Francis Flacco, who is our disaster program manager for the area. Ball drop.
Yes, good afternoon. Our community disaster program manager, who was there for, I believe, 11 years, had retired, happily retired now, and I took over in November of last year. Very excited to serve this community, excited to work with this wonderful group of people, and I hope to see you at one of our events, blood, you know, donations, or any other time except disasters. I don't want to see you in a disaster. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Will Seroptimists of Marysville, Yuba City, please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing March 2025 as National Women's History Month?
I got to put my glasses on, I'm sorry. I can't read without them. There we go, okay. National Women's History Month, March 2025. American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life in the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home. American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which creates a more fair and just society for all. Despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and the study of American history. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the board the month of March 2025 as Women's History Month in Sutter County, and encourage all residents of this county to join in recognizing the numerous contributions made by women with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Congratulations. If we can give them a round of applause.
Hi, I'm Sandy, the current president of the Seroptimist Club, and we'd like to thank Chairman Flores and the supervisors for this recognition for National Women's History Month. Seroptimists as an organization has been around for 104 years, and this club in Marysville, Yuba City has been around for 96. So, we appreciate all the support from the community on our missions and our efforts. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Did you want to announce the dinner coming up, or, okay?
So, we do, oh, actually, Kelly, you want to answer? Yeah, we have our annual dinner in the orchard event coming up. This year is May the 17th, and please come join us. It's our annual fundraiser, so.
Awesome, okay, let's give them another round of applause. This is Seroptimist Club, done a wonderful job. And if you stay up here for a photo, please.
Thank you.
Hey, before they sit down, I do want to recognize my dear friend Sandy here, who won the Athena Award from the Chamber of Commerce. So, I think we should give her a round of applause, too, so, yeah. Great job, guys. And thank you for all you do as Seroptimists.
Well, Tasia Payne with the Agency on Aging for Area 4, please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing March 2025 as March for Meals.
Since 1972, the National Senior Nutrition Program has funded local programs that serve home-delivered and congregate meals to help to ensure older adults have opportunities to stay healthy, independent, and connected. Meals on Wheels Yuba-Sutter Counties, a direct service of the Agency on Aging Area 4, has been one such funded program supporting the health and independence of our communities' aging adults and individuals with disabilities. Meals on Wheels Yuba-Sutter Counties, staff and volunteers have demonstrated an unwavering commitment to reduce hunger and food insecurity, promote socialization and well-being, and delay the onset of adverse health conditions for homebound adults. The County of Sutter recognizes March as the 53rd anniversary of the National Senior Nutrition Program and celebrates the contributions of Meals on Wheels Yuba and Sutter Counties to health and independence of our counties' aging and homebound residents. We express our deepest gratitude to the tireless efforts of the staff, the volunteers, who have dedicated their time and energy to ensure that our homebound neighbors receive not only nutritious meals, but also the companionship and support they need. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors presents this proclamation to the Meals on Wheels Yuba-Sutter Counties as a token of our community's appreciation and admiration for their outstanding service.
I am honored to accept this proclamation from the Board of Supervisors in Sutter County. This recognition will go a long way within our team as well as to the participants we serve. It's important to mention that Meals on Wheels Yuba-Sutter not only provides nutritious meals, but also provides vital social connections to older adults and people with disabilities who are homebound. And nationwide, older adult population is rapidly growing, which creates waitlists for programs such as Meals on Wheels and leaves a lot of older adults vulnerable and without the support that they need. And here in Sutter County, we are dealing with similar challenges. We do currently have a waitlist on our Meals on Wheels program, Yuba-Sutter, and the way we are addressing it is by asking for volunteers who can help us deliver meals, as well as make those friendly calls and make our participants feel less lonely and more part of the community. So, we appreciate your recognition, and thank you so much.
All right. All right, so I want to give our staff a huge round of applause. Sarah, you should be up here, too, because we ran into a huge roadblock by the government. Gosh, what was it, about six months ago? About six months ago, they came up and they said, "We're going to cut quite a bit of your budget off of Meals on Wheels." So, I mean, we had meeting after meeting, and Sarah helped streamline, put everything together, along with yourself, and it was huge, because we were able to continue those meals. And without those out-of-town meetings and so forth and in-town meetings, it never would have happened. And like, it takes a village, and we were lucky, working with the food bank, working with everyone, all these different organizations, to help it go. I mean, because there was going to be quite a bit of elderly that weren't going to get meals. And the state was fine with that, but we weren't. But, so, thank you for all you guys did. That was a big deal. A lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes that no one sees, and it's because of individuals like yourself that makes it happen.
Thank you, Supervisor. And let's give her a final round of applause, and then we're going to take pictures. Except for the photo. Yeah.
Well, Sarah Eberhart Rios and Sutter County social workers, please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing March 2025 as National Social Workers Month.
Sutter Health granted us a huge grant, too, for that Meals on Wheels. I forgot to mention Sutter Health.
Welcome. All right, we got the whole room here. Important folks right here, social workers. Okay, National Social Workers Month, March 2025. Social workers enter the profession because they have a strong desire to help empower individuals, families, and communities to overcome issues that prevent them from reaching their full potential and have worked for more than a century to improve the well-being and support the basic needs of all people. Social workers follow a code of ethics that call on them to respect the dignity and worth of all people in schools, hospitals, and the military, child welfare agencies, adult protective services, public and behavioral health, employment and eligibility, healthcare settings, serving those who are homeless, conserved, or individuals exiting and in the criminal justice systems throughout numerous programs operating in Sutter County. Social workers have continued to push for changes that have made our society a better place to live through programs and advocacy that help address poverty, hunger, and homelessness, working throughout our society to meet people where they are, to help empower people to reach the goals they wish to attain. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 as National Social Workers Month in Sutter County, and ask that all residents join in recognizing the numerous contributions made by the Sutter County social workers, celebrate and support the social work profession. All right. You guys do a lot. Sarah?
Thank you so much for recognizing us social workers. Today, we gather to celebrate the extraordinary contributions of social workers. We dedicate our lives to making the world a better place. Young, sun, heroes work tirelessly to uplift individuals, families, and communities, often in the face of immense challenges. As we know, specifically, Sutter and Yuba County have limited resources for our clients, and we all work tirelessly to connect our clients to those services any way we can, reaching out to different agencies, family members, you name it. We go to no end to provide for our clients. So, thank you for taking this time to recognize us.
Thank you.
So, I'm your Health and Human Services, Sarah Eberhart Rios, and so, I'm so glad to have our social workers here and have them speak on behalf of the incredible work that they do. Many of us are here because a social worker cared about us, including me. My dad was an orphan at two years old, and essentially was helped all along his life. And so, really inspired by you and thankful for everything that you do. So, thank you.
Photos? Thank you. Thank you all. Can you come up for a moment? We have a special presentation for you. Supervisor Stevens has prepared a special treat for you, so I'm going to let him talk to you about it, okay?
So, ever since I've been on the board, these last three months, Tony has said he loves pumpkin pie, and he knew we had Stevens Farmhouse. So, Mrs. Stevens Farmhouse made him a special pie for his birthday, so, Tony.
Tony Farley, as the honorary Board Supervisor Member, as the honorary Board Supervisor Member, honorary Board Supervisor Member, now honorary elected official, I give Sir County Sheriff's Department a $400 salary raise. Yeah. Same salary as President of the United States, $400, six-figure, same as President, for Sir County Sheriff's Department, clean, Tava, Sheriff Bran Barnes, Sheriff Scott Smallwood, and also deputies, everybody, the Sheriff's Department gets a six-figure salary raise. Yeah. Supervisor, Supervisor can get a six-figure salary raise, too.
Okay, thank you, Tony. You had Supervisor Stevens make the pie, and then Tony give you the big raise. Not a bad deal. Yeah, let's make him another pie, Supervisor. Okay, well, thank you. I think Tony's happy. You don't have to share it with us, Tony, don't worry. Okay? Before I move on, I do want to report that coming out of closed session, that we have nothing to report. So, we did have a closed session, but I need to report nothing. And then, we're going to move on now to public comment. This is where members of the public will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. State law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing posted on the agenda. We have the consent calendar, but prior to consent, we do have one public comment regarding item. What's the consent item number?
Number seven.
Okay, so, we're going to take the public comment regarding item number seven, and then I will call for a motion on consent. So, public comment, item number seven, go ahead.
Tina Hessong.
Hi, Tina.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. That was so sweet for Tony, thank you. I spoke to you many times about the quandary that the federal HAVA Act and the state SAB 969 creates, and I feel that it's inappropriate to submit a HAVA grant application knowing that you cannot comply with the mandates of both of these laws. You can be held personally liable in this manner, which may not have been a big deal in the previous administration, but I have a feeling it might be pretty important with the new administration, so I'd like you to consider that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. We'll come back to the board, and I will ask for a motion. We are removing item number one, and the motion on consent regarding items number one through 14, less item one, please.
Excuse me, excuse me, Chair, we do have four additional public comment cards.
Oh, you do? Okay. All right, well, go back to the public comment cards. I wasn't aware of that, so go ahead and call the public comments.
Manny Cardoza.
Board, chair and board, I want to thank you, gentlemen, very much for appointing me on the Behavioral Health Advisory Board for a second term. It is a great honor and a privilege to be representing Sutter County on such a wonderful board for Sutter County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you. Hello and good afternoon. Thank you, members of the Board of Supervisors, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Scott, and I am here today to comment on a previously discussed resolution to limit public access to the walkway between Glenwood Drive and South Barrett Road. I have been a resident of this area for over 40 years, and this walkway has been an important, if not a necessary, travel route for people of this part of Yuba City since I have lived here, just a stone's throw away from that walkway. It has been used by students from Lynncrest School, Gray Avenue School, Yuba City High School, and those who are on their daily walks, many from outside of the general area of concern, people who are possibly limited at one time or another as to a safe and convenient route to their destination, and many others with needs to use that walkway, whatever they may be. My wife and I have friends on both sides of the neighborhoods who are opposed to closing it, feeling it would be counterproductive. We are aware that there have been problems over the years, but for the most part, people who use that walkway are respectful and good people. At the last meeting, a resident on Glenwood Drive told my wife and one of our neighbors to stay in their own neighborhood, and I sincerely hope that this is not the feeling of the board. Once again, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you. Once again, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you on behalf of my neighbors.
Thank you for your comments. Next public speaker.
Tony Farley.
Tony gets two shots at the mic, huh? He only get one pie, Tony.
One pie, a piece of pie, man. Tony Farley, South Walton, Hyde Park, South U.C., South Sutter County, Carm Baines, and across over, that road sign is Matt Quinn's district. So, Tony Farley, yeah, the Sheriff's Department should get a big raise. The Sheriff's Department, man. Matter of fact, I'm a Blue Falcon. I like the first policy of the county, policy of the Sheriff's Department, policy of the government. I'm a policy Blue Falcon uniform. So, yeah, Blue Falcon means I follow the policy, and I kind of do, kind of do, be a head clerk on the policies, policies, all that. So, yeah, thank you, thank you, Board Supervisor, they get raised too. Thank you, Jeff Boone, District Four, right? District One, Matt Conan, District Four, right? Matt Conan is, no, 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 Carm Baines. Carm Baines is a John Deere, like John Deere tractor, like the John Deere, big John Deere tractor. And Dan Flores, the Murray'sville, also the Jay, Jack Know What Capital of the world. Yes, you. And Stevens Farmhouse, man, I love pies. And Mike Ziegemeyer, man, this just, Board Supervisor job is, is a full-time job, not part-time, full-time. Board Supervisor's full-time job with good benefits and a good badge. Hi, Mike Ziegemeyer, I saw you down in Kern County, the Farmer Expo, you talked about part-time, it was full-time, it's not part-time, it's full-time, it's like being lawyers, like a full-time job being Board Supervisor member. And Stephanie, thank you, Stephanie, thank you, Sarah Rios. Matter of fact, I watch Bar Rescue, it's Burnett Lady on Bar Rescue, like Sarah. It's called Lisa Meyer Royce, she's like Sarah on Bar Rescue. And thank you, and Tina Hassel, thank you, Tina Hassel. Thank you, thank you, Zach Hamble, L.A.P.D., L.A. Fires. Thank you, Bill, lawyer, thank you, thank you, Steve Smith, the President of Steve Smith. Thank you. That was a cycle B, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Tony. Next comment card.
Our final speaker is Nate Black.
Hello, Nate, welcome.
Honorable Chair and Supervisors, thank you for a few minutes of your time. I may go over the three minutes a little bit. I hope, you know, you can just give me the, when you've had enough.
Being that you're the Auditor Controller, we will certainly allow that time, no problem.
Well, I appreciate it a lot. So, in light of some recent developments last week, I thought it would be appropriate for me to come before you and give you an update on Workday. That is the ERP Enterprise Resource Platform that Sutter County engaged into and went live with back in April and May of 2024. And that new, a lot of people might think of it as a financial system, but it really is more than that. Another huge component of the system is human resources, and so, I'm not going to go into that. That would be for Veronica to do at another time, but anyway, it's a very large platform. And we, you know, we got to bring on 1,100 employees, and then we have to do the accounting books and records for the county, for much of the special district transactions in the pool treasury. And we, so we've got a litany of things that have to be addressed in this implementation, and we did a darn good job, notwithstanding the fact that we definitely have holes that we've been plugging and working on and getting better. So, anyway, before I go into a little bit more detail about that, I just wanted to take a moment to gloat a little bit and recognize two of my staff, really, all of my staff, but I brought two of them with me here today, and they are Sheeney Santos, my Assistant Auditor Controller, and next to her, Jing Wong, our property, thank you, our Property Tax Manager. They're very, very significant positions that those two ladies occupy, and they are so productive and such strong employees and such a huge value for Sutter County. And by the way, through this implementation that went live about 10 months ago, they still kept at it, and they both passed all four parts of the CPA exam, and they're both CPAs now, and it's incredible. And I had the honor of signing their applications, and it's a real honor. Thank you both. Vicki is our third manager. She's not here tonight. She's back at the office. We didn't want to take the whole team out, and they honestly are annoyed at me for bringing them here because there's so much work to do, but I just needed it this one time. You guys need the recognition. Okay, so, back to Workday. The quick little backstory I just want to give to set kind of the context for the consideration that the board took on and went forward with was that we were in an ERP called One Solution, and it had stopped being supported and maintained by the company that owned the product to a great extent. And I've worked with many department heads, I'm going to talk about a couple of them tonight briefly, but we felt this pain very hard, and when you're dealing with such a large organization with frankly, very limited resources, a broken financial system, ERP, has significant implications. And tonight, I'm here really before you to talk about one implication in Workday that didn't go so good, but give you an update on how that is today. But anyway, that's the background. We just, we had a system, we no longer could maintain confidence was going to be persisting into the future and viable. As an example, just to put a pin on it, the W-4, which became, it was a new W-4 the IRS issued in 2019, which changes how you approach your withholdings. The system we had for years after 2019 through COVID and all that, it still did not allow for the new W-4. So, such a basic requirement from the Internal Revenue Service, the system didn't even accommodate. And that's just, again, one small example, I'm trying to be brief. And so, ultimately, we decided to take the plunge and to jump into this Workday platform. Let me give you a little, again, brief. I can go on and on about this stuff for a long time, I'm not going to do that. You can thank me later, but I'm here, I'm also happy to answer any questions as I talk, if it's something you want to hear more about. So, Workday is a commercial sector product that has transitioned to the government side. So, here's a couple of companies, obviously not an exhaustive list, that Workday has as customers, okay? 3M, Airbnb, Bank of America, BlackRock, Humana, Pfizer, eBay, Morgan Stanley, Walmart, U.S. Foods, Kohl's, Lennar Homes, Citibank, Dell USA, Target Corp. So, they've now made inroads at local governments, specifically that side of their platform. So, we have 11 counties right now in California that are on Workday, and I'm going to briefly name them. Placer, Butte, Nevada, Contra Costa, San Mateo, Lake County, Santa Cruz, San Joaquin, Santa Barbara, Kern, and of course, Sutter County. This product is not going anywhere but up. It's going to get better and better, and it's going to be here, I think, for our lives. We did not have that, and Ken could talk to you about this for a long time, we did not have that kind of confidence even close in the old system. In fact, they're struggling. So, it's a good system, but it's going to need continued work and effort, and we're here to do that. We're going to keep doing that. And so, as I was trying to think about how I wanted to craft this Workday update for you, what it keeps coming back to is that this county has just an exceptional team. It really does, and I am so honored to be a part of that team and to have collaborated with some key department heads to get us live in Workday, and we are paying the bills. We are doing payroll for over 1,100 people. It's working. Is there still issues here and there? Absolutely. Do we listen and work on those? Absolutely. Do we meet about it? All the time. My office has direct meeting with the Treasurer Tax Collector, has a direct meeting with HR, has a direct meeting with the CIO's office. Those are all separate meetings, but they're all useful to facilitate improvements in the system, because everybody has a little different need, a little different perspective. Of course, the CIO's is the most important, and so, we collaborate with them. So, about kind of what got me here to talk to you in public comment, not on the agenda and a scheduled item, is just wanting to kind of talk a bit about Workday publicly. And so, I want to talk about one challenge that was brought to the forefront last week, and that is claims processing. So, the County Auditor Controller's Office is the approver for all access to the pool treasury in the county, and that works in all 58 of the California counties in that way. And I won't get into government code unless you want it, but that's how it works. And so, anybody that wants to access the pool treasury has to present to us documentation that we then review and hopefully, and generally, approve. And then, they can access their funds, and the treasurer facilitates that payment. So, during the last 10 months, we have been over 30 days at certain points in processing our claims, and so, I'll not sidestep that or anything, that's absolutely the case. And we're very, we're knee-deep in it, we know that, and we have a lot of important departments that, and special districts, that require us to get their business processed. Tony wants me to do the sheriffs first, and we try to, Sheriff, but everybody's business is important, obviously, and so, the throughput is important, getting it done. So, just to bring us up to today, we're down to a week, one-week turnaround, which, by the way, is, it's the fastest we've ever been, and it's taken us a long time to get here, so I'm just going to give you a couple of reasons why we're here, why we've made it.
Black.
Yes, please.
Wrap it up in a few minutes, and I'd love to have you back for an agenda item, though, so.
Actually, through the chair, I was going to actually say something. Sorry, but there's nothing we can discuss about this, so what I would, I'm going to ask you to come back to the next meeting, so we could actually put this on the agenda, so we could discuss workforce, and I'd ask the department heads to show up next meeting as well, so we could pick your brains on, with workforce. Like I said, we can't discuss this in public because it's not on the agenda, so I'd like to ask you questions, but I can't do that.
Okay, Supervisor, thank you. So, go ahead and wrap it up within like a minute or so, and then we'll have you back for an agenda item. Will that work, Honor Black?
Of course, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Appreciate it, yeah.
For sure.
Appreciate you being here today.
Oh, my pleasure. Okay, so, I will get right to the end, then. It's really, I just want to recognize some of the key players on the team that I've spent the last two and a half, three years of my life working with on this project, and I'm very honored and pleased by how well they've done. And so, anyways, I'm going to start off with Ken Sra, our General Services Director. Ken has been there the whole time and could not have done it without him. I want to, I'm going to just keep moving, sorry, Ken. I'm going to keep moving now. Nicole Croner is our Deputy Director of IT, works for Ken, and she was the Project Manager for Sutter County, and she did an incredible job. I want to also mention HR, Veronica, I already mentioned her, but they have a huge part of the program, and they've done an amazing job. The last three I want to mention, Treasurer Tax Collector, I don't think he's here, but he's contributed a lot to the project. The CIO's Office has been there the whole time, the whole, through all of the challenges, and they still are today, and I appreciate it a lot. And then, finally, I want to recognize an outside department that embedded herself with our team, and that's HHS Director Sarah Eberhart-Rios. I don't know how she does it all, but she found the time to participate and to help us from a different perspective on the implementation. And then, finally, that she's also provided, and I'll be brief, but a lot of creativity and now resources to help us keep the claims down that I was just getting at, that the fact that we're at one-week turnaround now, not a month. So, anyway, the team's incredible, Sutter County, for the resources we have or don't have, I just am so proud to work on this team. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Honor Black, appreciate it. We'll have you back as well. Okay, I'm going to move now, and I'll entertain a motion for the consent items two through 14.
I make a motion to approve two through 14.
Okay, we have a first, and by Supervisor Ziegemeyer, second by Supervisor Baines. Do I have a roll call vote, please? Can I have a roll call?
Supervisor Boone?
Yes.
Supervisor Flores?
Yes.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on now to public hearing, item number 15.
Public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution updating the Natomas Basin mitigation fee for 2025 for authorized development under the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Neil Hay will present the item.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. So, this is an annual item that comes before your board. Every year, the Natomas Basin Conservancy provides our department with the updated land values for mitigation within the basin, and your staff report includes the estimated cost for the subsequent year. The report essentially was put together by the firm EPS, which is also the financial firm that is preparing the Urban Services Plan and the other key financial documents for the Lakeside at Sutter Point project. I could have, we can scroll through. You can see in the staff report that essentially the change in values from last year is about $1,000, went previously 46,009 to now 47,031, which is one of the lower increases on a per-annual basis that the Conservancy has recommended, one, and adopted by their boards, and then recommended to your board for approval. To kind of understand how this works, that if a development does a project that's more than 50 acres, they have to, they can provide a reduced fee, pay a reduced fee of $33,281 per acre, plus they have to dedicate 50% land somewhere in the basin. If they do a project less than 50 acres, then they can just pay the outright fee of $47,031 for each acre of mitigation. And this is all related to the GGS habitat mitigation ratio of 0.5 to 1, which is a really advantageous mitigation ratio for development within the Natomas Basin. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the staff report or about the figures.
Okay, thank you, Neil. What I'll do first is open up to public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments? Okay, there being none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the board for comments. Questions or comments, board members?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Ziegemeyer, and a second by Supervisor Baines. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Okay, thank you, Neil. I appreciate the presentation. We'll move on now to appearance items.
Receive a presentation from the Agency on Aging Area Four regarding the Yuba-Sutter Aging and Disability Resource Connection Action Plan, Blue Zone Initiative, and the application to join the AARP Network of Age-Friendly States and Communities.
You can go there, yeah.
My name is German Ayan. I'm a Program Manager with the Agency on Aging Area Four, and I'm representing today the Aging and Disability Resource Connection of Yuba and Sutter Counties. Today, I will be presenting on the AARP Age-Friendly Livable Community and asking for your support to join the network. Today, I will be, I will also be joined by Janique Lee, the Program Manager of Freed Center for Independent Living, Marnie Sanders, Executive Director of the Blue Zones Project, Don Angelo, the Regional Director of AARP, and myself. So, what is the AARP Age-Friendly Livable Community membership? So, this membership was established in 2012 to help communities prepare for demographic shifts. It includes towns, cities, counties, and states committed to becoming more age-friendly. This provides access to national and global research, models, and best practices. It equips local leaders and residents with resources for assessing the needs of community members and developing an action plan. Membership in the AARP Network of Age-Friendly States and Communities is free. It also provides recognition for committing to becoming age-friendly. It provides resources for identifying and assessing community needs, and it offers access to technical assistance and expert-led webinars, as well as support and best practices from AARP. So, what is an age-friendly community? An age-friendly community makes it easier for people to live their best lives at age-old age. An age-friendly community makes it easier for people to live their best lives at every age by offering diverse housing options, reliable transportation choices, accessible public spaces, opportunities for social engagement, and promoting health and accessing information. So why age-friendly? So there is going to be a demographic shift, as we heard today from multiple speakers. By 2030, for the first time in California history, older adults will outnumber those under the age of 18. And by 2016, nearly 1 in 4 U.S. residents will be at least 65 years and older. Because of these shift states are joining the network. California joined in 2021 as the eighth state in the network. Hundreds of towns, cities, and counties across the nation have enrolled in the AARP Network of Age Friendly States and Communities. In California, 19 counties are currently members with a total of 93 participating cities and counties, and there will be more. So AARP offers eight domains of livability, which include civic participation and employment, housing, communications and information, respect and social inclusion, health services and community supports, social participation, outdoor spaces and buildings, and transportations. So the eight domains of livability framework is used by many towns, cities, counties, and states enrolled in the AARP Network of Age Friendly States to organize and prioritize their work to becoming more livable for both older residents and people with disabilities. So memberships in the network serves as an organizing structure for making community improvements, fosters partnerships among community groups and local stakeholders, provides resources for identifying and assessing community needs, and enables community improvements that benefit people of all ages. The membership also provides local leaders with access to expert-led webinars and technical assistance for livability professionals, connections to a national network of more than 700 enrolled communities, a private group forum for discussions, asking questions, and finding answers, and support, guidance, and best practice resources from AARP about creating an action plan and documenting progress. So the program, program steps. Members of the AARP Network of Age Friendly States and Communities commit to an assessment process and cycle of continuous improvement, the steps of which typically require the member community to establish a way to include older residents in all stages of the age-friendly process, conduct a community needs assessment, develop an action and evaluation plan based on the assessment results, and submit to AARP for review, implement the plan and work towards its goals, assess the impact of implementing the plan, and submit progress reports, and share solutions, successes, and best practices across the age-friendly network. The next slide, I will talk about what we have already been doing as the Yuba Sutter ADRC, which is the Aging and Disability Resource Connection. So our commitment, which is a local aging and disability action plan, which we received from the California Department of Aging. This was funding that was allocated to the state to develop a 10-year master plan for aging that focused on the demographic shifts that are coming. So within this funding, that there's a big picture, the master plan for aging for all of California. There was additional funding that was focused on a smaller local level. So we received funding and in partnership with Freed Center for Independent Living, Agency on Aging Area Four, and Yuba Sutter Calusa United Way, we have worked together with and hiring a consultant to gather community input. So we've conducted focus groups. We've had eight focus groups where 75 participants representing older adults, individuals with disabilities, caregivers, rural residents, Hmong, Latino, LGBT, veterans, and low-income communities. And we also conducted surveys. So we had multilingual online and paper survey, and we used an example from Age Friendly Minnesota Survey. So we received 297 responses from older adults, individuals with disabilities, and caregivers. This survey was offered in English, Spanish, Hmong, and Punjabi. So as you can see, we've done all of this work already. We also looked at local data. So we contacted Sutter County Health and Human Services, Yuba Sutter Behavioral Health, Yuba Sutter Homeless Consortium, and we've reviewed all of that data as well as our consultant. And we've collected all of that data, and we're working on developing a data map. We've also conducted a work, multiple work groups. So we've had two work groups. The first work group, we reviewed all of that existing data, and we engaged the community. And we identified some of the issues that exist in our community. So some of the gaps and some of those programs that are in existence and need more support. After that work group, we had the second part, which we, which based off of what we reviewed and identified, we developed actionable strategies and objectives. So out of all of this work, we have identified five bold goals for the Yuba Sutter Local Aging and Disability Action Plan. So one of them is affording housing and emergency preparedness. Second one is transportation and community mobility. The third one is healthcare and caregiving. Fourth one is food security and nutrition. And the fifth one is social engagement in a livable community. So as I mentioned before, we have built strategic partnerships. So we developed or are developing the Local Aging and Disability Action Plan in partnership with Agency on Aging Area Four, Freed Center for Independent Living, and Yuba Sutter Calusa United Way. So those three partners are the steering members of this, of moving this forward. However, we have also reached out to extended partners such as the Blue Zones Project. And their mission focuses on transforming community environments to promote health, longevity, and well-being, which aligns with our Local Aging and Disability Action Plan. We have also involved multiple ADRC partners, such as the Yuba Sutter Homeless Consortium, the Yuba Foothills Agriculture Community Center, Alzheimer's Association, Yuba Sutter Transit, Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health, Hmong and Latino Outreach Services, Camptonville Community Partnership, Yuba Sutter Meals on Wheels, AARP, Yuba County, and Yuba City Commissions on Aging, among other partners. So the outcomes expected from joining the AARP Network. By becoming an age-friendly community, Yuba and Sutter Counties will gain access to resources that support community-specific initiatives and align with global best practices. This membership will demonstrate our county's commitment to creating a supportive, inclusive environment for residents of all ages. So the call to action today is by joining the AARP Age Friendly Network. It is a proactive step toward a stronger, more inclusive community. It aligns with our Local Aging and Disability Action Plan goals that I mentioned previously. So we're asking for your support and commitment to make this happen. Communities seeking to enroll in the AARP Network of Age Friendly States and Communities are required to submit a membership of application, as well as a letter of commitment from the Board of Supervisors. So now I would like to invite my co-partners, Freed, AARP, and Blue Zones Project.
Good afternoon, Chairman Flores and supervisors. Marnie Sanders with Blue Zones Project Yuba Sutter. And I really just want to give support to Agency on Aging and the work that they're doing, and their intention on joining AARP. We have really enjoyed a great partnership with them so far. And collaboration with them, we've actually been able to build a community garden, actually on the other side of the river, but we're going to do it over here, too, hopefully. But as German pointed out, we, the, the, the goals of the work that they're doing are very well aligned with the goals of Blue Zones, just creating more health and well-being throughout our community at all ages. And one of our mottos with Blue Zones is that we want to reach everyone everywhere and give everyone the opportunity to access healthy choices and to live better, longer. And so everything that they're doing is really, again, aligned so well with the work of Blue Zones. And so we fully support the work that they're doing, and I think we will continue to come alongside of them as they endeavor to meet the requirements of AARP. And we will happily continue to do that work with them.
Good afternoon. I'm Janique Lee. I'm the program manager for Yuba Sutter Freed Center for Independent Living. And we've been honored to be a part of the Aging and Disability Resource Connection in partnership with Area Four, and in developing the master plan on aging and disability for Yuba Sutter Counties, and with the Calusa-Yuba-Sutter United Way. A lot of what we're talking about are things that the committee, the Board of Supervisors has already supported in so many different ways with so many different programs that you, you have been involved in and ensuring move forward, such as housing, such as the shelters, the CHIP plan, supporting Blue Zones, the community, the senior center, and your commissions on aging. And we've tried to get as many of those involved with these plans as we can. And also with your IHSS Advisory Committee. And livable communities, while geared towards people who are 60-plus, and our plan geared towards those who are 60-plus and those with disabilities, it really assists everyone of every age and every ability, whether it be accessible sidewalks that allow a mother with a stroller to walk safely and get up on the curb with that stroller. Or housing that is accessible and makes it easier for people to load in whatever furniture or whatever that they have when they're moving in or out. Thank you for your consideration.
Good afternoon, Chair and supervisors. My name is Don Angelo, and I'm the Sacramento Regional Director for AARP. I am here on behalf of the 8,500 AARP, over 8,500 AARP members in Sutter County to express our support for the Age Friendly Community Initiative. AARP is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization dedicated to empowering people to choose how they live as they age. Locally, one of our top priorities is promoting the creation of livable communities, and we are strongly committed to helping build age-friendly communities across California and the nation. We know that the more connected and engaged people are within their community, the more likely they are to age successfully and remain living in their homes as they age, as the vast majority wish to do. That is why AARP California has worked alongside public officials, community leaders, and residents across the state to plan for and enact changes that will improve the lives of older adults and people of all ages and abilities. To date, more than 100 California cities and counties have enrolled in AARP's Network of Age Friendly States and Communities. I think that was on par with what German said, but that number is always changing. And it actually represents nearly 2/3, or over 28 million, of the state's population. So enrolling in the network provides, as you heard from German, municipalities with the framework to address critical issues like affordable housing, transportation mobility, and reducing social isolation. We've already heard the stats on how California's population is aging, so I won't repeat those for you, but it does demonstrate the importance of having a plan in place for this shifting demographic. We are so grateful to the area, or the Agency on Aging Area Four, for helping to facilitate the planning process with community leaders, stakeholders, and residents. We also appreciate your commitment as elected officials to older adults and their families. Thank you.
To the Chair. Does that complete your presentation? Great. First of all, are there any public comments? Okay, there being none, bring it back to the board for comments. So obviously, this was just an information item. I just thank you for your presentation. You did a great job. I think we look forward to continuing to support you guys and your efforts. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay, we'll move to item 17.
Receive a presentation from the court-appointed special advocates for children.
Okay, thank you for having us here. Thank you, supervisors, for allowing us some time to present CASA to you. We are court-appointed special advocates. So as you can read, our mission at Child Advocates of Placer and Yuba Counties is that we are a nonprofit organization committed to being the bridge between the most vulnerable in our community and the caring volunteers who make a difference. And before I go much further, if you notice, that does say Child Advocates of Placer and Yuba Counties, but we are, we have the okay. We are coming to Sutter County, and we are actually working on a name change to include Sutter in our name. So hang on, we will be, we will be changing that. Not that it has been a huge contention for us who want to move forward and get marketing material and collateral and all that good stuff, but, you know, red tape. So it is, it is coming. We are coming, Sutter. Yes, and we are anticipating September as a start date. We have to hire staff, we have to train them, and we have to learn every, the Sutter County practices. So just a little bit of numbers here for you, for those that love numbers. I do not. So currently, our numbers in Yuba is there are about 190 children in our dependency court system. We have 140 at-risk foster children in Yuba County Dependency Court that are waiting for a CASA. So in, we are currently serving about 50 children now. In 2024, Yuba County alone, as a one-year-old program, served 70, 66 at-risk foster youth. So children in foster care, as I'm sure you are aware, have a higher level of risk in a lot of different areas. As you can see on, on, on the board, they have a lot higher, they have a lot of placement changes. Foster care can, can change, or social workers can change. But what we pride ourselves on is that the CASA advocate that is assigned to the child stays with them for the entire 12 to 20 months of their dependency foster system, so that we are the stable adult that they have during this process there away from their parents. Foster children have a higher risk of homelessness. They have higher risk of, I'm just going to kind of just paraphrase all that. They have a higher risk of getting in trouble with the justice system, which is increasing in our jails. And so we are hoping in a small way that we are able to help curb some of that, giving them that stable adult that they can, they can have and talk to. And so what we do is we, this is kind of where I come in. I am the recruitment and engagement coordinator for Yuba Sutter. And we train and equip caring volunteers to advocate on the behalf of these foster children. We go to school. We advocate with their teachers, making sure they are getting the proper education that they need if they need special help. We advocate with medical foster, foster care, social workers. So we're the eyes and the ears of our judges, so they get a better understanding of what these foster children are going through. We already, we already discussed, the Yuba County program has helped 66 children last, last year as a whole with our Placer County office. We have served 436 children in the foster care system. We believe in the whole family approach. So we also have, coming up, we'll, we'll hear more about some of our other programs that help the family. Locally, we have a CASA store in our Marysville office, where we have new items. We have an amazing community that is so generous and caring. They have donated items for these children. We have women from the Quilting Guild that make us some quilts to give to these children. We have stuffed animals, books, toys. The idea is to give them some comfort during a very difficult, scary time for them. We have Heroes Fund, which is amazing. We want these children to feel as normal as possible. We don't want them to have the stigma of being in foster care. So if they want to learn piano, if they want... want to learn piano, if they want to play on a soccer team, we have a fund that will help them accomplish some of those goals.
Hello. Thank you so much for having me. I think everybody knows Nicole Rubio. My name is Katia Poelmann. I need to introduce myself, not Nicole. So I work together with Nicole. I'm in charge of recruiting volunteers and finding the funding for it. We train and recruit about 126 volunteers each year. We have a huge waitlist, so my ask right now, like all the other organizations before us, we need volunteers. So please sign up. Say hi to Nicole. All in all, last year, we had about 444 volunteers. That amount changed a little bit. So next slide. We offer different programs. So every time there is a need, CASA is our flagship store. Court-appointed special advocates is a flagship, what we do best and very proud of. Thank you to all the social workers, by the way, who were honored before. Couldn't do what we do without them. So every time there is a need, a staff member sees, you know, we have a lot of kids in the foster care system that are also at risk of being sex trafficked. Unfortunately, that's an issue in Placer, Yuba, and Sutter County together. So we started a Be Bold program that serves these youth. We build peer support groups where they learn, you know, how to safe date somebody, how to be in a peer group, learn from each other. So we see a need and we create a program. Depending, in Sutter County, it really depends on the funding, what we can do here, and what the needs are. And I'm sure you have already lots of nonprofits filling these spaces, so we want to be very careful. But we love to collaborate with everybody here, so please let us know if there is a need. As Nicole said, next slide. Yeah, thank you. That's a great program. Canine for Kids, everybody loves puppies. I know Yuba County has a great program where the dogs come into the court. Kids have to come to court at least once, and it's very anxious. So we bring in a dog, and in Yuba County, they do that. If you have a need here, we would be happy to fill that. But Nicole talked about the whole family approach. So every judge has the goal to reunite the child with their parents. The parents get a case plan they have to work on from social workers, and we want to support these parents as well. We have staff that has lived experience, that has been there, and they can really help them and guide them through that process. Sorry, I already skipped to the next. Okay. So I don't want to go into every slide, but it's the whole family approach. We help parents at different stages. We help them during the reunification process, and we help them at the very end. Sometimes it's just that basic life skill that they're lacking and that we can teach them. And one more slide. Yeah, one more. So Kinship Allies is another one where we saw a need. Actually, Children's System of Care pointed it out. We have a lot of grandparents that take in these kids, or a lot of friends, friends of the families, soccer coaches, whatever kids identify. So oftentimes, it's grandparents stepping in. We just had grandparents that took in five of their grandkids in a two-bedroom apartment on a fixed income. Those grandparents need our help. We assign a volunteer, just as we do to the CASA, and we have hopefully some funding for them, because oftentimes, the funding kicks in a little later. So these grandparents, for example, were sleeping on the couch, so we wanted to help them and at least have an air mattress where they can sleep on. We provide some food for them until they get some financial aid. We just want to make really sure that these grandparents stay with that commitment, because if they don't, if they say it's too much, then we have to look for another placement for these kids, and that's traumatic. Once, it will be more traumatic when this happens the second time. So these are all our programs. We would love to do all of these in Sutter County. We got the green light for CASA. We are super excited to do that. We hope to start in September, and we need volunteers because we have a long waitlist and we need the funding. So did I forget anything? Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions from the public? Yes, sir. You can take the mic if you would like.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your presentation. My name is Bijan with Yuba City. You mentioned source of funding, and your goals are quite worthwhile, but where do you get your funding from?
So we get federal grants. We also get private donations. We got a Yuba block grant recently. And we do fundraisers. We have two big events coming up. Those are unrestricted funding that we're using.
And are you asking the county for funding as well?
If there are grants out there, we'll definitely ask for those, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your question. Any other questions? Board and Supervisor Stevens?
Hi. Nicole brought me in from the very beginning of CASA in Yuba County, and I fell in love with the program from the very start, and Say Love has been involved in it. And I just cannot imagine a better program, because we need to catch these youth when they're small and young and provide assistance and support. And this program does it in a way that I just can't say enough of it. You've got my complete support.
We even have your wife, too.
I talked her into it.
So my little shameless plug as the Yuba Sutter recruitment, we desperately need volunteers. We also need a couple board members, so we're always open for that, so please let me know. But we are in desperate needs of volunteers. If wrangling a child is not something you want to do, we have our parent empowerment group. You could mentor an adult trying to be reunified with their own children. So lots of ways to help. Of course, we always accept donations, because, you know, that's always a good thing for a nonprofit, right? So you can get ahold of me at info@casayuba.org. I do have some flyers out there. We are having our first little fundraiser. With this amazing community, finding a weekend to do a full-on fundraiser is a little difficult. So we are having a Red Robin fundraiser. So there are flyers out there. If you bring the flyer in on March 31st, I believe it is, 20% with that flyer, 20%, we'll come back to CASA.
Awesome. Well, thank you for your presentation. Are there any other comments from the board?
Again, just great presentation. Sorry it wasn't an action item, but look forward to supporting you guys.
I know you've kept bugging me. Yes, yes, we're finally coming to Sutter County.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good job. Well, thank you. Okay, moving now on to item 18.
Presentation of the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation, five-year, 2025 through 2030 Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, Appendix 1, update, and the 2024 CEES Annual Performance and Evaluation.
Thank you, Chair. Nice to see you. Board, thanks for having us. Brenda Strannix with the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation. We have a couple of new supervisors that have not been subjected to our annual updates with the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, but we appreciate your time. So each year, well, let me back up a little bit. Every five years, we do a massive overhaul of our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. We are wrapping up the last five-year with this update today, and we're also presenting the next five-year update as well. Cynthia Rodrick with my team does the lion's share of work, so I am going to give her the floor. She's going to give you a very brief, I promise, presentation that will highlight some of the areas regionally, as well as some items specific to Sutter County. We're happy to answer questions when we're finished.
So good afternoon. Thanks for having us. And our overall vision with the SEDs is together, we will build a thriving community through innovation, investment in infrastructure, and a strong commitment to economic growth, creating unparalleled opportunities and exceptional quality of life for all in our region. And I'm just going to go over a few items to give you an overview of the region. So in employment and workforce, our labor and annual wages did improve over the prior year. And although unemployment did increase, I feel that that's just a small glitch right now. And over the year 2024, quarter two, employment grew by 1.7%. This slide represents the region's economic status, and overall, the region has improved its economic well-being through, although poverty rates did increase, our gross domestic product, though, had a 7.22% increase. We're still struggling with our education attainment, though, and over the year, we did decrease. And we really, really need to take a good, hard look at education attainment. We had a lot of industries and jobs added. There was 9,872 jobs and over the last 10 years in our region. And the top industries was healthcare, social assistance, retail trade, educational services, accommodation and food services, agriculture, and public administration. I'll let you do it. They never work for me. We did have an increase in the number of establishments over the year. There were 614 new establishments in the Yuba Sutter region. So those are jobs Agriculture, gross values increased by 4% in Sutter County and a whopping 35.7% increase in Yuba County. Just to give you an idea how important Beal Air Force Base is to our region, in 2022, Beal executed $67.7 million in local contracts.
Through the chair. How much of that went to Sutter County?
They didn't break it down for me.
All right, because those are the numbers that I'm interested in. So next time, if we could have that broken down, I've asked the last couple of years, I'm curious about. I respect what they're doing over there in Marysville and Yuba County, but I'm a county supervisor. I need to know how much benefit they bring to us over here. That means jobs included. So if we can get that number.
We can certainly try.
Thank you.
The base provides us with that data. And there was almost 11,000 jobs created. As you can see, the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation has been busy over the year, and I would like to call to your attention, through our efforts, 677 jobs were created and 76 were retained. I'm not going to go over these individual numbers. You can see that we've provided a lot of services to our businesses in the area. Regionally, improvement of infrastructure, there was $1.7 billion in public investment and $76 million in private investment for public works projects across the region. Caltrans completed several projects at $245.3 million investment in the region. And in Sutter County, they have eight projects that are listed in the public works projects, and five of them are slated for construction in 2025, 20 to 2028. The Yuba Sutter Transit, transportation is an issue in our two-county region, and they've almost got their transit facility fully funded at $52 million. They're seeking about another $3 million so they can finish the project. And I'm sure you're aware of the regional rail project, which will bring accessibility from Sacramento on up through to Buke County. And strategic plan has been approved, so it's moving forward. The major housing project in Sutter County, of course, is Lakeside at Sutter Point. They did begin construction in 2024, and community amenities and homes are expected to begin in summer of 2025. And the first residence should be located at Sutter Point in spring of 2026. There are additional phases in this, two and three, and the mapping of 487 acres was approved to allow development to continue after the completion of Phase One. For fostering overall quality of care or quality of life, regionally, the Yuba Sutter Arts Council, Arts and Culture, had seven ongoing projects throughout the two-county region. Sutter County Museum in 2023 hosted over 9,000 visitors to the museum. And a special note, of course, is the CEES Parade with more than 100,000 people attending. And that's just, the next slide. And there's other amenities throughout our region, and it just goes to show that there is a lot to do and a lot happening in the two-county Homelessness is always an issue. And in 2024, the Sutter-Yuba Homeless Consortium saw extremely high usage of their facilities and had about 95% utilization in their facilities. And during 2024, 254 clients in Sutter County obtained safe and affordable permanent housing, and 393 clients in Yuba County. So that's a real brief overview for you, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to entertain them.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. I'll ask first, start with the public. Are there any public comments? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board for any comments? Any comments from the board? Okay. I want to say thank you for your presentation. EDC, you're always great at gathering data for us. And I think to Supervisor Ziegemeyer's point, if we can get some data just on the Sutter County side, but I know that it's an MSA, right? So it's a space. Can you explain what the MSA is so that everybody understands that?
Sure. So the Yuba Sutter MSA is Yuba and Sutter County. It's designated as a metropolitan statistic area. So our work, especially on this regional plan, is regional in nature. It encompasses the two-county region. We certainly can try to get, drill down data specific to Sutter County as well.
Okay, Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yeah, through the chair. I was hoping, Brenda, that you could help put together, because last year in '24, there was a, I guess it was a more or less, not a job fair, but a service fair for contractors in Yuba County, but it was only allowed for Yuba County contractors. Sutter County contractors weren't allowed to participate. So I would recommend, you know, that we pitch in, that we'd open it up. You know, we are a region. The Air Force serves us all. Therefore, I believe it, you know, should be nice to have something for access to contractors on both sides of the river.
So currently, there is a procurement fair that is slated for this Friday coming up, and it is open to the region.
Well, we've done more with less time, so we'll have to figure this out. Can you send us email us each some?
About the procurement fair?
Exactly.
Certainly.
So we can get it on our personal social networks, so we can get our local contractors. Hopefully, it's not too late to sign up.
Where's the procurement?
It will be held at the Yuba County Government Center.
Yuba County Government Center, okay. Okay, any other comments from the board? All right. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you. We are asking that you adopt a resolution today to accept the update as well as the 2026-2030 Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And I do want to thank Neil Hay and his team with Public Works for their commitment to making sure we get projects updated so that then they're, you know, eligible for funding.
Okay, and then I will call for a motion.
Through the chair. I'm confused. So are we voting on this right here? Are we voting on the contract to have them do it the next five years, Steve?
We're voting on the SEDs report.
Yeah, but the SEDs, but she brought up '26, '27, '28, '29, '30.
It's a five-year plan that would be accepted, and it makes us eligible for certain federal grants.
Make a motion to accept.
Second. First and the second, roll call vote, please.
Superizer Boone?
Aye.
Superizer Flores?
Aye.
Superizer Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Superizer Baines?
Aye.
Superizer Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you.
I always have it. Thank you very much.
Through the chair, would you mind, could we, would you mind if I did my correspondence first? Because I got to go on. I'm going to emcee the 4-H dinner tonight, which starts at 5:00.
Leaving shortly, or what?
Yes, I will have to be there at 5:00. Yes, I will have to be there at 5:00. I'm the emcee for the, for the 4-H dinner.
Can we do it right after the next presentation? Would that work for you?
Yeah.
Item 19.
Approval of the addition of one flexibly-staffed accounting technician to the Auditor-and-Controller's Office. Approval of an adjustment to the fiscal year 2024-25 adopted budget in the amount of $27,062 to transfer funds for the accounting technician position from Health and Human Services Administration to the Auditor-and-Controller. Approval of the addition of one limited-term accountant/auditor to the Auditor-and-Controller's Office through June 30th, 2027, and amend the position allocation schedule for the Auditor-and-Controller's Office to reflect the above changes.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board, Veronica Baumgartner, HR Director. Bear with me as I try to get through this, sorry. As Nate gave some background earlier in regards to a similar topic, in July 2022, your board approved a 15-year agreement with Workday. Workday, our EAP, or, sorry, ERP package included many areas, including human resources, finance, general ledger, and payroll. Conversion to Workday began in late summer of 2022, and we actually went live almost coming up on a year ago in April 2024. While Workday has simplified many of our processes, payroll processing really continues to require manual review of time cards, with many exceptions each pay period. With approximately 1,000 Sutter County employees, this process is very labor-intensive and time-consuming. Health and Human Services has approximately 575 full-time equivalent positions, therefore, to assist the Auditor-and-Controller's Office with timely payroll processing, HHS and the Auditor-and-Controller's Office have mutually agreed that an accounting technician being, that is being requested today, would be funded by HHS and allow the Auditor's Office to help process payroll timely. I can attest, the, the small team that we have in the Auditor-and-Controller's Office is very hardworking. They are always here. They all have strong work ethics, and we know they are always available, but they, they are overwhelmed and understaffed, especially if you looked at other like counties and/or comparable counties. We have half or, or even less than that compared to other payroll staff in other counties our size. HHS has held an account tech vacant in preparation of these payroll processing needs. While we understand workflow changes and challenges are always expected in project implementations such of this size, we are requesting additional help. Prior to implementation, the Auditor's Office requested minimal additional staffing for this implementation, and that was just one accounting technician. Due to delays, like we spoke of before, we are requesting an addition of one, also one limited-term, sorry, accountant/auditor, to allow faster processing, particularly for special districts and outside government structures that are affected and that are feeling the, the staff constraints that are coming from, from the department. So Human Resources has worked with both HHS and the Auditor-and-Controller's Office and the CAO's office on this recommendation today. To start, for the one account tech position, there are adequate appropriations in the 24-25 HHS admin budget to cover this cost, and there will be no increase to the general fund if this position is approved. The position, the funding for this position will be included in the 25-26 HHS budget. For the other limited-term auditor/accountant position, for the remainder of 24-25, is anticipated to be $24,509 and $124,070 for fiscal year 25-26. The majority of the Auditor-and-Controller's cost is recovered through the annual cost plan and is charged proportionately to local, state, and federal programs. There is sufficient appropriation authority remaining in the fiscal year 24-25 budget to support this cost through the end of the fiscal year, and if approved, the position will be included in the 25-26 requested budget. And myself, Sarah, and Nate are here if you have any questions.
Through the chair.
Thank you. Yes, Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
I'm, I'm going to recommend to my fellow supervisors to table this, because I still want to know what's going on with Workday and the department heads. You know, I'm going to get a lot of questions, because in the beginning of this meeting, we talked about how everything was going, 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 you know? So, I mean, now we're talking about, hey, we need extra help. So, like I said, Nate, I, I need more information here before I say personally, before I say, hey, let's hire someone else on, because we're moving someone else of another department. But like I said, you know, we get this in a public meeting, we answer those questions with our department heads, how everything's flowing, we'll do some more digging on, you know, we'll have some 2-2-1 meetings, we'll figure it out. But my recommendation is, I'm going to put a motion out there to table it until we get our ducks in row, so we know what's going on.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Veronica, can I ask you, so since I've come on, that's probably what I've heard the most frustration on is Workday, through all the departments that I've had conversations with. Has Workday fallen down in some places? Is that where the disconnect is? I feel like they should have been here helping us out along the way.
Good question, and actually, I could also defer to Ken maybe on this, if he wants to add, but no, I don't think that they have, you know, fallen. We have a lot of resources in place that, that Ken and Nicole Croner, our project manager, help us with, but I think, you know, post, we're now post-implementation, right? So, so they worked us all the way through the product, but there's so many pieces to it. I would say, yeah, we have great support from our IT staff and just continue to work through, through a lot of these.
So Supervisor, you asked whether Workday had some shortcomings during the implementation. Definitely, we chose as a county and recommended to the board to do the most cost-effective and shortest implementation as we could. So with that understanding is that you go live at a certain point in time, and then you have to continue to improve, you know, the, the product, the workflows. There's going to be some hiccups, but nothing that's a showstopper. So, yeah, it might cause a few complaints, it might be a little bit more difficult. Change is always hard, you've got to learn more, you've got to learn how to do something new, but we're doing it for the long run, right? So we have to look bigger picture. We're not just doing something to like make our lives better immediately, but we're setting this organization up to really succeed in the future. So we're kind of taking on the brunt of that to make things better for the future. So I would say, yeah, you know, we've had some challenges, but nothing that has been a showstopper that we couldn't address, right? I mean, one of the biggest challenges we're hearing today is that we had a little bit of a delay in paying claims, but, you know, that is a much better trade-off than trying to say, well, you know, we can't run payroll, right? I mean, you know, you've got to weigh those things. So I would say, given the amount of money we spent and the amount of time, it was a relatively successful implementation.
Well, I would, I would oppose tabling it for right now, because I feel like the need is there, and we can do it without affecting our general fund. And what I hear from all the departments is that more help would be beneficial.
I would agree with you. I would say that historically, we haven't had enough funding to keep the accountants we need, and a lot of times, they'll leave for other agencies. So the, the more help we can get, the better. The Auditor-and-Controller's Office is understaffed right now, and they have a number of empty positions, so we need to get them staffed up.
Through the chair. Yes. I'd like to make a motion to. Hold on, sorry, we have a motion on the floor, so I need to, either we have a second for the motion or the motion.
And, and through the chair, I want to clarify, I, like I said.
I had one standing.
It's what we hear out for.
Just to see if there's a second.
So I'm just curious, because I've, I've received hundreds of phone calls on Workday, not one or two. And so I'm just curious, you know, you could look in the tabloids, 8,100 people were let go of, of Workday, you know, they want to streamline stuff, move in jobs overseas. I'm just curious what effect that has to be. I feel when you buy a product, you buy 100% of a product. You don't buy 99% of a product, you buy 100%. If we don't get 100% of the product, I'm not going to pay for 100% of the product. So that's what I'm upset about. Maybe it's not the good people we have here, maybe it's what they have out there, Workday itself in general. So maybe those are the issues. So, and I don't have a problem, because I know we're way understaffed at, at the Auditor-and-Controller's Office, but that's every office. So I'm just curious, because Nate got up there and talked about how thorough they were and how up to speed everything was before this meeting, but now all of a sudden, so I'm, I'm just.
Okay. Let me just ask, is there a second to Supervisor Ziegemeyer's motion? Okay, any further comments?
To the chair?
Yes.
I can address a few of the issues if you'd like before a vote, or I can hold off.
So my, my thought on this, and I don't see, I'll see how my fellow board members feel about it, but we invited the auditor/controller to come back and talk about Workday and giving us an update. I think that we need the staff right now, in the meantime, to carry on as we go forward, but, you know, if we want, if we have concerns about hearing more about how Workday is functioning and about, more about the complaints and understanding where we are now, I think that we need to agendize that item so that we spend the proper time and that we spend the proper understanding, because I, although I appreciated the Auditor's report today, you know, I too have heard a lot of negativity about Workday, and I think it would behoove all of the staff who have worked on Workday and done a great job to come back and report to us on the status of Workday, where it's been, where it is now, rather than carrying on a complete discussion now regarding this specific topic, which is providing staffing for the Auditor's Office. That's my feeling on it. If you don't mind, C.S. Smith, I just, unless the, you know, other supervisors feel differently about it, that's what I'd prefer to do today.
Nope. I, I second Supervisor Baines, because I know we need the staff.
Okay, so we have.
Regardless, we need the staff.
Great. We have a motion from Supervisor Baines and a second from Supervisor Ziegemeyer to, for the recommended action. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Then I'll have a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Great. Eyes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then we'll look forward to having that update on Workday, and we know, we know that you'll be able to provide us an update of how things are going, right? Thank you, Supervisor Ziegemeyer. And I know that you want to do a report before I go to the next item. Sorry, Sarah, we're going to, we're going to skip to one item for district reports for Supervisor Ziegemeyer, because he's running off to a 4-H dinner. So go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Thank you. I want to close in memory of Opal Murphy of Sutter, longtime resident who passed away. And I want to thank Neil Hay for spending the morning with me. We had some great meetings this morning. We started our morning in Sutter with Aaron Murphy off of Lidle and Southview Road, and then we moved over to Markley and Township Road, met over there with Lisa Shogren. That was great. Then we moved over to Meridian and met with Suzanne Davis. Biggest thing is, I'm going to request that we provide direction to staff to bring an item to the board authorizing, the Development Services Director, to transfer ownership of excessive dirt during street and culvert maintenance to property owners. When doing so, we're going to result in almost a savings of probably over $100,000. What it means is, when we're cleaning out a ditch in Riega, we got to haul that dirt all the way to a county yard, because legally, we can't give it away, because it's everyone's dirt. So we call up the ranch owner right next door, we said, hey, you want this dirt? We can take that dump truck and dump it right next door. Or we spend two hours, hour there, hour back, that's two hours. So we're cutting time and energy. Guys are able to go, we get these ditches cleaned, and we saw this, like I said, when we were in Meridian, off of Markley and Township, off of Southview Road, there's ranches all over. 70% of Sutter County is in a FEMA flood zone, so it's always going to be ag, so we got extra places. So it'd benefit the heck out of that and save us a lot of time and energy, but we don't have an ordinance that allows us to do that. So, other than that, thank you. Hope you all have a great week. The 4-H auction is tonight, it's the only fundraiser for the 4-H besides, I mean, you have the fair for the annals, but the 4-H auction is for everyone. I love doing the emcee, it's a great event. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Ziegemeyer. Good luck with the 4-H. Raise lots of money for them, would you? Okay. All right. Now we'll back up to item number 20.
Approval of an agreement with the City of Yuba City to accept Better Way Shelter funding in the amount of $135 for the period of December 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2030.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Sarah Eberhart-Rios, your Health and Human Services Director. This item establishes an agreement between Yuba City and Sutter County to accept permanent local housing allocation funds, otherwise known as PHLA, for use in support of Better Way Shelter operating costs in the amount of $135,000. PHLA provides funding to local governments in California for housing-related projects and programs that address unmet housing needs in their local communities. Statutes of SB 2 Atkins in 2017 established a $75 recording fee on real estate documents to increase the supply of affordable homes in California. SB 2 directs the California Department of Housing and Community Development to use 70% of the revenue collected via this $75 fee, beginning in calendar year 2019, to provide financial assistance to local governments for eligible projects. PHLA allocations require a state-approved spending plan, and eligible funding uses include activities that increase the supply of affordable housing for households at or below 60% of the area median income, increase assistance to affordable owner-occupied workforce housing, assist persons experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness, and facilitate housing affordability for lower and moderate-income households. This agreement falls under Assistance to Persons Experiencing Homelessness. Sutter County Health and Human Services worked collaboratively with our colleagues at the City of Yuba City on this agreement, designating a portion of Yuba City's PHLA allocation to Sutter County for this purpose. Better Way Shelter is a low-barrier homeless shelter that provides services for up to 40 adults aged 18 and older with a temporary place to stay for up to 90 days. Better Way serves between 89 and 141 individuals per year, with an average cost per client of up to $90 per day. 46% of Better Way's operating costs are funded with state and other grants. And with that, Doug Libby, Deputy Director for Yuba City Public Works, and I are both here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Any public comments? If there being none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I make a motion, real quick, just a question.
Yeah. Supervisor Baines?
So it breaks down like 24,000 or so a year for the city? What is the actual cost? What is, what are we?
Sarah may be actually in better.
Sure.
Position to answer that question.
Yes, and so also, I'll invite Doug if he wants to add to this, but it's my understanding we can allocate this, these funds, the 135,000, in any budget year we choose, and so we would likely propose to allocate the entire 135,000 in our upcoming 25-26 budget year. And the operating costs for Better Way are approximately $952,000 per year.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, Supervisor Baines?
No, thank you.
Okay. Did you have a motion, Supervisor Boone?
Yes, I make a motion to accept.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. We have a first by Supervisor Boone, second by Supervisor Baines. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay. Eyes have it. Thank you very much, Sarah. And now we'll move on to Steve Smith, Sutter County Administrator, with follow-up and announcements.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. So just a couple things. This Saturday, the 15th, from 7:30 until noon, the Clerk Recorder is having a special passport day. I think the appointments are filled up, but they do take walk-ins. And for anyone that knows, during the week when they go, it's, it's extremely busy. So just like to thank that office and Donna Johnston and her folks for putting on that additional day. I used it a year or two ago, and it was, it was very helpful. So again, this Saturday, Clerk Recorder's Office, Special Passport Day, 7:30 to noon. And then also, I wanted to mention Sutter County Fire. We've known over the past couple of years that it's been very difficult to secure funding to keep the ongoing operations at the current level of two firefighters per shift. And. And doing some legal research, we found that CSA, County Service Areas, are able to charge fees as long as it does not exceed the cost of providing the service. And this is in addition to, they receive a special fire tax and a small portion of property tax. So, with the great budget difficulty they're having, and I anticipate there are six limited-term positions that we're trying to hang on to that some of the COVID money has helped. Otherwise, we would have been in a much worse position over the last few years. The Board dedicated a lot of that to public safety. But I would like to move forward with having staff, and if needed, a consultant, work on a rate study as soon as possible so that we can bring some possible fees to the Board to consider implementing. And that would likely be for CSAF and possibly CSA C and D. I'll have to see, they have different staffing, so it may be different amounts.
Okay, thank you for your comments, CAO Smith. I personally think that would be a great idea to bring those, that proposal back, or at least a better understanding for us. Any other board members would like to comment regarding CAO's recommendation?
I would just add that charging fees, for me, is a better idea than, than closing stations or browning them out. That's encouraging.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Stevens. And I will move on to, unless there's any questions on correspondence, then we'll move on to district reports, and we'll start with Supervisor Stevens.
Well, I had the opportunity last night to go down to Nicholas. The Sheriff's Department invited me down for a community event just to go over things. I really appreciate them doing that. They do it, I believe, in all areas. So, had a real good meeting, about 30 to 40 people came out. I'm really impressed by what the Sheriff's Department does with the resources that they have. It's incredible when you hear the story about how they have to, how much money is spent in the jails for public, or for inmate safety, for medication, for their, you know, meals. Everything that they do in there is just extremely expensive and what they have to do to the, the, the amount of work they have to do to make that jail specifically safe to inmates trying to cause themselves harm to avoid litigation and possible high lawsuit damages. I really commend them for the work they put in, and I'd just like to say thank you to the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Stevens. Supervisor Boone?
I just wanted to say to Sarah Everhart-Rios, I really appreciate all the work that you do at our county level and how you step in when you see a needed position and make things happen. And one of those that we saw earlier with Nate, and that makes a big impact, and it didn't go unnoticed, and I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Boone. Supervisor Baines?
So, I'd like to request a birthday card for Tony to go along with his pie.
Your only comment? Okay, thank you, Supervisor Baines.
So, we heard about Supervisor Ziegemeyer's meetings today, and they bumped my meetings that I had with Neil, so we'll have to reschedule later. But, but before we approve the, the request he made, is that even possible? And how do you, which neighbor gets the dirt? I mean, I'm just. I mean, is it even possible? No, I'm just saying, I'm like, is it, how does that even happen? Is that even possible to make that request?
Yes, it actually is. It would be a gift of public funds, however, as long as there's a public purpose, then the Board could make that determination. And so, in this case, I believe what Supervisor Ziegemeyer was thinking was that the, the savings that the county would receive would outweigh the benefit to the individual. And so, therefore, it creates a public benefit.
Again, just going back, like, how do we determine which neighbor gets the dirt?
That would be something that would be.
Brochamo.
Discretion of the Board.
Okay, well, I guess we can, that's something we can find out more about, right? Okay, all right, any other comments, Supervisor Baines? Okay, great, I just have a couple of things. First, I do want to recognize our staff as well. For people who don't know, everybody that I know that's involved at Sutter County as staff work really, really hard. You know, we work, we heard from the Auditor's Office today, we've heard from Sarah's office, we heard from Boomgar, or, sorry, Veronica, you know, from HR tonight. But I especially want to call out Steve Smith because I'll tell you, the CAO is there day and night. I often come into the office in the evenings because I do work during the day. And then I'll tell you, all day Sunday, and in the evenings all last week, this gentleman was there, and sometimes till 8, 9 o'clock at night, and then all day this last Sunday. So, I just want to share that, you know, there's a lot of hard work and time that goes into all the things that go on. So, you don't know what happens behind the scenes, behind the scenes during the day and in the night, and it's just a lot of work. So, I don't know how to stress that, but I really want to stress that appreciation to you, CAO Smith, and just all the staff for really the hard work. I know this other staff in your office are always in there as well, so, you know, give them, let's give them a round of applause, actually, if we could. Yeah. And don't worry, ladies, I know he can't do it without you two sitting over there, so we're not leaving you out. But I just want to call, and I also want to just recognize the Board here. We spent a great weekend last weekend on the Bakaai Parade. We had just, I'm just going to say it was fun. I mean, we rode, we rode and walked, some of us walked in the parade, handed out candy, and met a lot of people in, in Marysville, and it was, it was a lot of fun. And then the evening, we all attended a dinner that was a really special dinner put on by the Hot Sing Society, which was 150, 150th anniversary dinner that they had. And I thought that was really special, and it's pretty neat that we live in an area or a region where something like that can happen. So, that was, that was a lot of fun, and to thank my fellow supervisors for joining us on that, on that day. Okay, with that, no further comments.
Motion to approve the.
Entertained motion, a second? A first and a second, we'll just say all in favor? Aye. Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Through the chair, we had that other closed session, remember?
Oh, yeah.
Second, continue.
Okay, we're moving to a closed session. Yay, job's never done, just like I said.
Legal counsel, existing litigation, case name Jeffrey Comer v. County of Sutter et al. Case, U.S. District Court, Eastern District of California, case number 222CV00079TLNCSK, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1.